I'd like to call the regular special meeting, the order of the Ashland Board of Commissioners, like a motion to receive and file the call letter.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports, Commissioners, anything? City Manager? You have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. First off, regarding the SCADA at the water treatment plant, we did have the pre-construction meeting this week. That went fine. We expect them to start within thirty days with a completion date by the end of May, or excuse me, by May twenty twenty-one. Also, the staff has been working very, very hard on a variety of things, but one of note for the public is that we're looking at a plan for limited reopening of facilities, and that's a limited reopening of the parks and also of the city building. Our tentative, our tentative target date right now is one June. The Governor's put out some pretty extensive guidance on what government facilities need to do to reopen, and it is very extensive, and so we think that will give us enough time to get that limited reopening done. And then we'll be looking, that's phase one, so we're in preparation phase right now. Phase one would be the limited reopening one June, and then tentatively, more, a more liberal opening of facilities on the first of July, but that depends a lot on the guidance that's come down from the state over, that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, I did see where South, or Dreamland Pool and Flatwoods Pool have already announced their closing, and I know we determined not opening Dawson Pool at the regular time, which I think is usually Memorial Day weekend, and I guess hold off on any other action at all to see how things turn out through the summer. I doubt we'll be open, but you know, we haven't taken a motion to do that, other than accepting the fact that we're not open on Memorial Day weekend. Is that correct? Is that where we're at?
For planning purposes, and I believe Jim would have to confirm on this, I'm not sure if the Governor's put out an executive order or strong guidance at this point, but I believe it's a, don't open pools until further notice. Jim, can you correct me on that? Is that accurate?
I don't think it's an executive order yet, but the feedback we've been getting, and I think Chief Police has got the same feedback, is that it's highly unlikely that they're gonna have pools open this year, but it's not definite yet. It's still subject to further action.
And I know that when we, I'm looking forward to getting our park open, at least in phase one of the opening, where we'll continue to keep the playground and areas where groups might congregate, keep those roped off. I would hope that we can open the pond area, and again, hope that people don't congregate other than immediate family. We want people to enjoy the outdoors as much as they can. I think it'd be good for everyone, but we still, we'll have to initiate some guidelines and regulations for everybody's safety. And one thing I do wanna mention again, this, I think it's the third time I've brought it up, but if you saw the paper, I think yesterday, Rocky Atkins, who's now Special Assistant to the Governor, had a wonderful editorial in the paper relative to the census, and again, I want to emphasize to people in our whole area that may be watching, our citizens, all citizens of Boyd County, it's just imperative that you take the two minutes to file for the census. You can do it by Kentucky.gov. It'll lead you to a form that's very quick, and please understand that by the census count is how Kentucky and Ashland and Boyd County will receive additional funds. Our money that we send to Washington is prorated on a, on a population basis throughout the American, throughout Kentucky, so if you don't do that, if we're missing a hundred people, fifty people, ten people, it will have a financial effect on the Boyd County Fiscal Court and on the city of Ashland. So please, it's your own money coming back to help, help you and help us provide services, so please do the census form. It's vital, and I know a lot of people don't think of it that way, but it is certainly vital, and I encourage you to do that. Anything else from anybody?
Mayor, I would just ask, you mentioned the parks and a phased reopening. Are we gonna be able to open this weekend, or what are we thinking?
Manager, you're, you've got it on a June one, and I think the weather's starting to break, and I don't, you know, with how we're gonna reopen with the stipulations and restraints within the park, I don't, I don't, I don't see any problem with moving it up. It appears it's gonna be, hit some good warm weather, although some rain. I certainly would not, would not be against opening it this weekend or first of the week to allow people to drive through the park, walk through the park, not congregate, social distance. You love the pond area, obviously the walking around the park, the trail through the park to the Library Commons area and places like that, but, and again, the manager, I've talked about this. We will have to, our, our police officer will have to keep a close eye on groups forming, so we can make sure that doesn't happen, and I'm hoping our citizens, obviously, and I've said this before, you know, due to the simple fact that we have such a low number in Boyd County, we know that throughout Kentucky and nationwide, it's probably more due to people not going to get tested. You know, we have that unknown group out there that we're not sure whether they're, they would test positive or not, but the fact that we've had, I think, three, three deaths over it, and just, just the numbers in Boyd County are so low relatively, that tells me people are also going by the guidelines, practicing those social distancing, washing their hands and so forth. I would expect them to do the same thing we open the park, and if we find out they're not doing it, then we could close the whole area again. That, that would be, I would rather be, give our people the benefit of the doubt that they would do the right thing, and then see if they do adhere to those guidelines, then we'll continue with it. I think because the people have been houselocked, yardlocked so long, it would be, I think, a very good overturn, a strong overturn from us to open the park sooner than June one, and obviously oversee how it's being handled by our public, and if it isn't handled correctly, we can, we can close it down again, but I really believe our people respect it.
Yeah, I think if, I think if you just use common sense on this, just rope off the playgrounds, I think there'd be minimal impact to city staff to get ready to open the park per se. Even if you wanted to leave the, the gates locked initially for people not to be able to drive through the middle, just, but you know, if you're parked, if you go drive by Lowe's or Walmart, they're parked right next to each other, and you're sure as heck as close as you could be, even though they're doing their best to keep people distanced with reminders, you're gonna be able to space yourself out a lot better in the park.
I have objection to open about this weekend.
Was, how's it feel?
My only question in opening them this weekend, just guidance from City Manager, do we, do we have staff in place in order to get them open this weekend?
We will, like I said, my recommendation was on the first of June, so we can meet in any guidance from the state. I don't think what you've described is undoable. Mayor, I think you touched on some key points, and that is, what we had initially planned on the, the initial phase was the parks grounds would be open, the picnic areas would be open, the walking paths would be open. What will be open would be playgrounds, the sports ball fields, courts, the restrooms. Because of what Commissioner Clark just mentioned, we did have an initial recommendation that we were still staffing internally on limited hours, because we are down right now at least two work parker, parks workers, and that number could also adjust. So, we're normally open, I think it's seven to eleven at night. We'll look at a reduction in the evening, and I would like to echo what you're saying, Mayor, and that is, as I've mentioned in this, in this meeting before, aggressive crimes have gone up. Chief will tell you that we had a very tough night last night. His guys were saturated with challenges, so if somebody's calling nine-one-one, which again, you can call nine-one-one for non-emergencies, and they want an immediate response from the police, they'll get there, they're, they're gonna triage and do what they can. And I think we'll be counting on the citizens to do what's right. We do have, the playground's currently marked. We don't have them roped off, but that's gonna have to be a situation that people are gonna have to honor that and respect it, and if they violate it, the people who are doing what's right need to understand that we'll get there as soon as we can, either with parks workers or with police officers. So I think that's, that's all I had to hit on it.
Well, just throw another specific in, so we're clear. It, you know, I said the path to the Library Commons, I'm not so sure we want to open the Library Commons, now that I think we may want to take it off.
That was, that was also to be delayed till the next phase, if that's, that's what you're saying.
Okay. Now, how about we get a call on the basketball courts, or the pickleball courts, or the tennis courts?
The basketball courts have had all the nets, or have had all the goals taken down, because people, that's the reason we closed the entrance before, is because even though we had put the guidance out that the park was shut down, people continued to violate that, and the pickleball courts and the tennis courts will remain locked until we go to the next phase, just because of the social distancing. I believe, and I need to look at my notes, I'm not sure where we're at on the not having gatherings of ten or more. I think the Governor had put out, yeah, that's April twenty-fifth, excuse me, May twenty-fifth, ten-person social gathering to be allowed. That was part of the reason that we had picked the first of June to go with that, but again, as long as they're not violating that, you know, that, that number that the Governor put out, it should be fine.
Mayor, sorry, just to make sure I was clear, I think Commissioner Perkins even suggested that we leave the entrances, the drive entrances closed, and is that what you said, Commissioner?
I was just thinking about, probably, probably a good idea.
But if you want to walk park or walk through, you know, walk around the pond, any of that sort of thing, I think that that would be acceptable, at least until we get some further guidance from the state about how to move forward with the rest of it.
Well, that in itself should deter large, large crowds, you know, from forming, because they're not gonna have parking. You know, there's adequate parking around Central and Seventeenth and areas like that, but I, I think that might not be for, at least for the couple of weeks, leave the gates up. Let people walk through the park and, and enjoy the pond and all that, and the social distance. We'll do the right thing. The problem is, we have a lot of people from out of state that come there and use the park a lot, and we'll just have to watch for, you know, infraction and enforced safety, but I think Saturday is fine. We can get the word out today this way, put on our website, and let our people have another place to enjoy. I'll bring it right now to enjoy. Anything else, anybody? Okay, old business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, requiring registration of residential housing units within the city of Ashland and providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance.
Do we have a second? No second, motion dies for lack of a second. And I'll go and see what we do on item B. Item B?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, enacting regulations to promote the abatement of public nuisances, providing a penalty for the violation of this ordinance by owners of properties who commit the recurrence of public nuisances activities on their properties without taking reasonable actions to bait the misuse of their property.
Have a second? Okay, now these two ordinances, there probably would be a better time to look at these again to implement, if we're gonna implement them. I think there are items in both that we are, we have full support on, and there are items that we have questions on, and we did ask for input, and I received input written in my office to me, and had some good points. They handled it very well. They didn't say, you know, what is this? This is crazy, you know, we're having a hard enough time dealing with our own property and all that. But I think people who live near rental properties that aren't as well-run, well-supervised by the owners as others' properties, we, you know, we put our head in the sand if we don't admit there are people who have properties they don't pay attention to. Who's renting there, how they, where they put their garbage, how much garbage they put out. I see it, I get calls, I get in the car, I go look, yep. You know, I'm not gonna live next door to that. Why, why do I have a citizen pleading with us to help when I wouldn't live by it? I don't expect them to. And these are things that, that, you know, I responded to, to the people that contacted me, and they didn't say, oh, don't do this, it's crazy. They had, they had some good input, and I appreciate it when people are in, you know, constructive with their criticisms and opposed to just, I'm against everything. But I think we need more time to look at this. There is a cost factor involved, which we don't need to get into more cost factors right now, for sure. But I think we all have some strong feelings about these, and not, not wanting to throw, throw it out the window. Just, we want to review it some more. I think this is an appropriate time with all the things that we're dealing with. So that's my feeling on both these dying. I don't, I don't think they're totally off, they'll be on the future agenda, I'm sure, and maybe all of us have gotten input, I'm sure all of you have too, and we can have some discussions probably at budget, when we do sit down with a budget review towards the end of this fiscal year and see how we want to address these, because all of us have got complaints on the condition of certain apartments and how they are run by the owner. So, it is, it's not something we can bury. We've got to deal with it in some fashion, but I don't think we're ready for action on these. Does that sum it up for everybody?
Mayor, just a quick comment. I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance. I think it addresses some of the issues that we need to address, and again, this is not an ordinance that has anything to do with the upkeep or anything of property. It's for criminal, criminal activity on the property, and I think that it's very important that we address those things.
Well, they do, or normally, they use those?
Normally they do, but, but those sorts of issues are code enforcement issues, and this is a criminal, just to make that delineation for the public. I agree completely, we need to address that. I'm with you a hundred percent when I think now is, when I say now is not the time to do that. The remedies for these people who have issues on their properties, they can't have hurt anybody right now. They can't, they, they simply don't have that as an option, and I'm, so I'm not sure that we're gonna get to a place where we can pass an ordinance that says that you have to come up with a plan to remedy your property, but I'm not sure what their remedies can be right now. So I think right now is not a good time for this.
I'd like to revisit this, if that's what I'm hearing.
We will.
Revisit this, because this is chronic. I think the word chronic is the first word here. Chronic use of properties in a manner that fosters criminal and drug activity and endanger the health and welfare of the Ashland community. I had an instance that happened just last week. Took two days of the police being on the corner here with code enforcement, with squatters in my neighborhood. No electricity in the house, they just broke in the house. And so you're, you're taking officers off the street and code enforcement and staff for people that are, it's criminal trespass, and you know, that's just, and what they were doing before was worse. And so I'd like to revisit it. I think Chief and, and Jim have, have done a well, have done well crafting this. I don't think it's a harsh knee-jerk, threaten you immediately with legal action type of ordinance. I think it's a solution-based ordinance that offers counsel to property owners if they're experiencing criminal activity on one of their properties. I think it's very lenient, I mean, as far, like, three times within a four-month period, six times a year. So we're talking about chronic, and I, I know a lot of landowners and a lot of landlords in this town, and there's a very miniscule, it's a minority that we have this activity. It's, you know, it's not like it's gonna be, it affects everybody. It's just a minority of people that this happens to. So I think if we nip, if we revisit it, I'd like to revisit it and see if we can get to some kind of solution.
I agree with you, Marty. I think we absolutely revisit it when there is, when there is an option for these property owners.
We'll look at it in, in July sometime, just to bring it back out for discussion, okay? I agree a hundred percent, Marty. Good point you made. It's normally a small percentage that cause laws to be written or actions to be taken, a small percentage of people. Okay, item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing improving change order number two between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and GRW Engineers, Inc., regarding their contract to provide engineering services for the Pollard Mills Drainage Improvement Project, making no change to the project total of four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, but redistributing funds within the contract for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing improving change order number two between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Frederick and May Construction Company, Inc., regarding their contract for the Pollard Mills Drainage Improvement Project, increasing the contract amount by two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Salute.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Child Development Center, the sub-recipient of five thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
Second.
Second. We didn't go in wild detail last, last meeting, but you know, these, these amounts to these agencies are directly put from federal funds and through our community development block grant. They've applied for help in specific areas, had to fill out paperwork, and were approved, and we are, we are now awarding these funds. These are not out of general fund or allocated to any other aspect of city government. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Ashland Community Kitchen, the sub-recipient of twenty-one thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Senior Center, the sub-recipient of eleven thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the last one. Item H?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Community Assistance and Referral Services, Inc., cares, the sub-recipient of ten thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last one. Item I?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the sub-recipient of twenty-two thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last one. Item J?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Safe Harbor Northeast Kentucky LLC, the sub-recipient of twelve thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Close the last one. I had an abstention, okay. Item K?
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Shelter of Hope, the sub-recipient of twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block Grant CB Funds.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the last one. Item L?
Second reading and final adoption ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Safe Harbor Northeast Kentucky, Inc., the sub-recipient of five thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-nineteen program Your Community Development Block?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
An abstention? Item M.
Discussion and possible action for a separate consent item titled City Manager Recommends the Following Health Plan Increases and Benefit Reductions for All City Employees with the exception of National Fire Department Union Employees. Premium increases and benefit reductions were reviewed and recommended by the Insurance Committee for approval of the Ashland Board of City Commissioners for an approximate saving of $712,526.88. This item was tabled in the May 7, 2020 meeting and there appears on the agenda again. It is understanding that there may not be ready and that it may be that we want to entertain a motion to continue this generally.
I move that we tabled this. So we get the analysis.
We'll yeah, we we expect a really in-depth analysis before our next meeting. So I think when you table, you do have to table at least two our next meeting, which is what we do. Commissioner Goode, and thank for trying to get that in before that point. If not, we'll address that meeting. So I have a second. Commissioner Goode, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's an important item that we want all the information we possibly get before we make a file of the city. Okay, consent agenda?
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda from the regular special meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, May 14, 2020.
Second.
If there's any any discussion, any item, the consent agenda?
I just want to make a comment on, I guess it's item eight, where we have authorized the appointment of the for fire cap. The those commitment to our having our first responders staffed and and reassures the public of our commitment to them that these basic essential services like public safety are serious to us even during these difficult times financially. And I think we have to and to keep that trust with the public that our first responders are going to be there for them. And I think this shows our commitment to that as a board.
Yeah, because normally we we in fact, we've held up on some other positions in the city to to take any action on. We may not take any action on to to fill or or on promotions of such. But I agree with Commissioner, and I think our public, if they don't recognize our commitment to public safety, I don't know what to say anymore. But we certainly do. And I appreciate your comments on that. Any other questions on there? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last sign. Okay, new business, item A.
Jim, you're on mute. Corporation Counsel, you're on mute.
I knew it set up at some time during meeting. Before we move on, I'm trying to look at, did we have an item J on old business? I have a text concerning this, or did was that taken off the agenda?
I think we I think we.
It was on the agenda.
Okay, item J, I'm being informed requires a waiver of conflict of interest from HUD, and that waiver has not been received as as a result of delays from HUD. So I think we should entertain a motion to rescind the the vote approving first reading of that and instead entertain a motion to table that. Let's not rather table it to a specific meeting. Let's have a motion to remove it indefinitely subject placed back on the agenda when the conflict of waivers received or conflict of interest waivers received from HUD.
Make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, we definitely want to follow federal guidelines on everything coming, but little comes we've been following closely. All favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstention and close the last sign. Thank you, Council, for bringing that back out. Let's go back to new business, item A.
Item A under new business, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment of the scope of services to Task Order 2018-02 between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, HDR Engineering, Inc., regarding the Phase Two Stormwater MS4 Compliance Report Preparation and Submission to the Kentucky Division of Water.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Close the last sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number three between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and DEBCON, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $13,683 regarding the 16th Street Plaza renovation project for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, can I just make a comment about this? Just because I want to make sure that that what we're doing and what the public perceives we are doing are the same thing. Did we lose Commissioner Perkins?
I'm back.
Okay, sorry. I saw you were gone. I didn't want I knew we would would be out of compliance as we went on. Andrew, this might be for you to explain more than anything. There's no way we can stop this project at this point, right? I mean, the money that we've allocated to this project is bound by contract, and we're going to have to spend it regardless. Am I correct in that thought?
The money is absolutely obligated per contract with DEPCON in this situation. We are under what was budgeted for last year. If we Jim would have to answer this, if we could legally break the contract, if we did that, if and and I can Steve Cole on also to answer this portion, the restart up cost would be would be reencur. So.
I just wanted that message sort of out there for the public. We've kind of taken a lot of hit for continuing this project when we're in such a financial crunch. And I just want to make certain that the public is aware that if we delay this project or if we stopped this project, it's going to cost us much more in the long run than what we've already allocated. So I just I just thank you for allowing me to kind of get that message out there.
And if you'd like, we can review the contract language to see if there's if there is a cost associated with breaking the contract from the city's perspective to inform the public. We'd be glad to get that. I just don't have that at my fingertips right now. But generally speaking, the cost to stop and restart this because, you know, it'd be different if they just put up the gates and they hadn't started on the project. They're they're knee deep in the project. Obviously, if you've driven by there, you see what that is and the impact on the community. So there would be significant cost increase of trying to complete this if we if we delayed it. Jim, is that accurate?
I'm suggesting that we are. I just wanted to make sure that that message was clear.
And I also let me say that add for impact to the businesses in that immediate affinity by delaying this project any further. We don't want to do that to them.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
It's also part of the bigger picture on the downtown revitalization. So I I think if you want to philosophically on this, like the governor says, we'll get through it. We'll get through it together. There's going to be a new normal, and the new normal for us will be back to going downtown at some new way to businesses. And that's going to be a key part of the downtown revitalization for the Roger Brooks discussion, where we're going strategically with that for the city. Also want to mention that it's it's not an insignificant number. They found about 3,000 square feet of concrete slab underneath the ground that they did not know existed. There are some other things that due to recent water work that we had in the area that needed to be corrected. And it also, the weather has impacted them pretty dramatically with some of the work cement work that they've done. So it's a couple of days delay also to I think it's early August.
It's an integral piece of the puzzle to revitalize our downtown.
Absolutely.
We we have so many businesses that that we're we're worried now about whether they'll ever be able to come back. But regardless of that, we'll we're going to do every incentive we can possibly come up with. And of course, we're we're hoping that we'll get some more small business assistance from Washington through all this to try to help these businesses to put every dime they they own in their time, talent, or treasure in these businesses that we're so proud of. And it's a hit that no one could ever foresee. But this this development in the center of our town is going to be there for 100 years or more. And it's going to be a focal point for people coming to our town, focal point for our citizens to be proud of and to enhance getting more people downtown, getting more businesses downtown. It's a big it's an investment. It's not a play pretty. It's an investment in our downtown. And I know you all feel that way, but no one has said anything to me. And of course, I don't get on Facebook. There's a lot of reasons why I don't get on there because many uninformed people put a lot of information out there I don't need to see, hear about. And that's a pretty blanket statement for me, too, because I get pieces of what's on there because some of you send me saying you ain't going to believe this one. And and I don't believe them. But it's people that don't have a lot of facts, don't have a foresight. We're city fathers right now, the temporary trustees of our city. It's an obligation, responsibility that I know every one of you take on with great sincerity and concern as I do. And while we're going to get through this, we're going to complete some things that are going to going to make our our city even better and stronger. We're not going to say woe is us. We're not doing it. And and people have to make sacrifices. And we're trying to take the time and and the effort to make those sacrifices minimal. And 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 we'll get through it that way. We really will. We the detractors and the and the people that are against everything, everything, and many of them don't even live in our city. And and many of the people complaining the most don't live in our city. But that being said, we're going to continue to persevere as the as the town fathers and mothers. But I've never heard councilwomen call you your town fathers, exactly what we all are. But we're going to continue to persevere to 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 take care of business and do as much as we can to enhance the future of Ashland.
Mayor, it's worth noting also that these this project was bid and the contract was awarded and the contract was entered into before most of us even knew what the word pandemic meant.
Absolutely.
It's it's just an obligation at this point. It would not only the fact that the projects have done, but the potential of a breach of contract and everything else would be more disadvantageous to the city than than it is to move forward with the project.
I appreciate that. Obviously, me being the one that been working on 15 years or more, but the one that you guys do, too, had circumstances being like they are now, we would have never entered into this. We would have put it on a back burner, as you do many times. But we're halfway done. We'll get through it, and people can be very proud of it. And we're going to forget a lot of the heartache and the problems we've been going through. And we just need to persevere, all of us, people in our homes. And you know, we'll all hang in there. That's what we have to do. Item B.
Do we need a vote?
We need a vote. We read item B. We need to vote on it.
Vote to approve item A for payment.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last sign. Item B. Thank you, guys.
Item C. Mr. Moore, you're muted again.
All right, here we go. The first reading approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing improving change order number three between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and DEBCON, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $13,683 regarding the 16th Street Plaza project for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
I know. We read it once. We just need a vote on it.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last sign. Okay, item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Part Five Compensation Plan G: Implications of Personnel Actions and High Salary Increases of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 51, Series of 2017, as previously amended.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this this item I asked to be on here, and it's to allow for review of any any salary increases from the from the time we set the budget next budget set of any of any size for any reason must be reviewed by the Board of Commissioners before it's enacted. So that in these dire times, I feel like it was necessary to do that. So I hope you all support it. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close the last sign. Thank you. Item Four.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled a municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing use of city rights away for the purpose of outdoor dining or the outdoor display and sale of merchandise through and including July 4, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Mayor, I make a suggestion. Our businesses have been hurt so badly, I would even think about extending this past the July 4 date.
Well, Commissioner Clark called me and we talked about this item. As we could we could amend it. I'm sure she'll be happy to go along with amending it.
I have no issue one way or the other. I thank all of you for getting behind this for our businesses. I thank you to council and city manager for me calling on a Sunday and saying, hey, can we do this? And it being on this agenda. I think we just originally I had said June 30. Commissioner Perkins mentioned maybe why not take it through the July 4 weekend. I only said we have a date to go back and revisit it. I don't have any issue one way or the other if you want to extend it to September 1. It really doesn't matter to me.
And we discuss.
I think it's fine. Go ahead, Council. I'm sorry.
When we originally drafted it, the discussion, I think the discussion item was that that was just a sort of arbitrary date, but that you all would reconsider prior to that date and decide if it needed to be extended again, and if so, for how long, which is probably a pretty reasonable approach to take and and just make it a sort of as we go type thing.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Commissioners, Stine, you're 100% right in asking about this. And I don't I'm going to leave it up to you and see what the rest of the people think. But August, August 1, September 1 is fine with me. Let's run it the whole summer. And what we're hoping happens is give a little more leniency to restaurants that can go outside. If we we stay under the governor's guidelines and regulations, you know, with keeping space between you, and and these people can get out on the sidewalk and space it that way, it's going to help it. If if merchants want to put things out in front of their stores, you know, to try to catch your eye or something, you're driving through town and and whatever the case may be. But but, you know, I I say because we're not going to have summer motion, and you're going to lose all of that foot traffic and people coming through town. We're not going to have cold landing, and of course, that's in the fall. But, you know, as things subside during the summer, maybe it loosens up a little bit more where you could have a semblance of a downtown festival with with social distance, but still hopefully allow our merchants to have a chance to act some of the potential buyers or whatever. I think I think it's a good a good amendment to make. So what what do you all what you're thinking? If one, despite all summer, to to allow people downtown to be.
Well, we would first need a motion and a second on the to amend it to what that date. And then after the amendment is adopted, then we'd vote on the proposed municipal order as amended.
Okay.
So second, Commissioner Steen's motion. Did you say well, maybe you should make that motion first.
Make the motion that we that we extend the date to September 1.
I'll second that.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the last sign. Okay, now a motion to re read the the amendment with that change, Council?
Correct. This would be therefore you'd be reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing use of city rights away for the purpose of outdoor dining or the outdoor display and sale of merchandise through. purpose of outdoor dining or the outdoor display and sale of merchandise through and including September 1, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
The only, the only caveat I want to add is the, I know in Louisville, when researching this specifically, they wanted to make sure there was compliance for insurance liability. And I think that was maybe the only ADA clients. I just want to make sure that those, those kind of issues are, are covered. Obviously, we, we want to offer this for our business community. We're, we all are pro-business, but don't think asking for proof of insurance for liability, especially in a dining setting, is too much to ask, especially with business being done on the public right of way. We don't, we, the city won't want to be exposed liability wise if we don't have to be.
Counsel?
As drafted, it, it, there's a provision in the municipal ordinance that says by use of the city's right of way, you agreed to indemnify and hold the city harmless from any liability as a result of that use. So that we had, we had addressed that.
Okay, right. Good point, Commissioner Perkins. Thanks for bringing it up.
When will this start? Immediately?
It's drafted to start immediately and, and then continue through September 1. Now, one thing, point we probably shouldn't make and, and any businesses utilizing this in terms of a restaurant have to understand that it is still subject to the regulations of the state ABC. And we've, Chief Kelly and myself, we've had some discussions about this. There may or may not be something forthcoming from Frankfurt, but right now, the sale of alcoholic beverages would be limited to their original licensing. So if you had an outdoor patio that was originally licensed, you could sell alcoholic beverages there. But if you had an extension under this municipal order, you would not be able to. We, we understand that the governor may address this in an executive order. Louisville has raised the same issue and we understand it's being dealt with. But for right now, the outdoor dining on the extended rights away would be limited to just that dining, not alcoholic beverages, pending some further action from Frankfurt.
Okay, well, if Louisville's asking for it, I'm sure it'll be granted.
Louisville always gets what they want.
But maybe it'll trickle down to us, you know?
Yeah. In the conversations that I've had, especially with, with counsel, and I know he's talking closely with the chief, I, I have, I feel like that will be addressed with the governor's executive order concerning the restaurants. I hope that it is. I hope that, that there is some leniency on that. I kind of made the joke to counsel that the same governor has allowed me to drive home with a gallon of margaritas. So I feel, I feel some confidence that, that those will be a little bit relaxed.
You do that all?
No, sir. In fact, I didn't realize, it was, it was actually very funny to me because I went into Lefinkas and asked for, you know, my dinner. And she said, do you want to try the margaritas? I said, am I allowed to do that? And she says, yes. And so I didn't get a gallon. I got it to go. My dinner. But I'm just saying, though, and I get in the car and of course, my retired police officer husband about lost his brain because I have a margarita with a lid on it to go home. And I said, they said it's allowed. So anyway.
Mayor, I was just concerned about Commissioner Clark because the regulation says that the alcohol has to be commensurate with the meal that you ordered. And when she said she got the gallon, I was a little concerned about what she was eating.
No.
Know that Mr. Moore, in your heyday, you called those travelers.
I, I don't know what you're talking about, Mayor.
No comment. At this rate, I was just making that example because I think that, that based on what we've seen so far, it will be addressed in the governor's executive order. And I probably should have just left it at that, but now I said way too much.
Hey, honesty is always the best policy. I like it. I enjoy it. It's a good story. And we go to Lefinkas a lot, so I'm glad to do that. So you'll, you'll, we'll deal with that and maybe stay in touch with the governor's office. I can always say something to Rocky about, hey, you probably ought to address this. So I talk to Rocky frequently, make sure he addresses this after he does it for Louisville.
Yeah, I don't think that would hurt.
What?
I don't think that would hurt.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, Mayor, if you do that, it would also be great if they would address, some of our local restaurants have their own properties that they may be extending outdoor dining on that won't be utilizing our right of way. But I think we would hope that Frankfurt would make some ruling, if you will, on whether or not they, if they're licensed facilities, if they can also serve alcohol in their extended facilities on their own property. Because we're told right now they probably can't. But again, if you're, if you're lobbying for that, I think it would be very helpful to our local restaurants who are licensed anyway, if they could extend that out into their own property where they put up tents or temporary.
Yeah. Well, it makes sense to me. You know, again, it's, it's, it's how they handle it. And the city, city of Ash, and under our, our ordinance has handled it very well over the years. And each establishment has to get a good control on how they handle it so there's never any repercussions from it. I mean, I, I would say that to them anytime and that's a standing thing besides some of the laws we have up on it. But you have to take care of your own crowd, basically is what I'm saying. You take care of your own people if you're serving them and when you should stop serving them and, and so forth. We, but, but Commissioner Steen, we, we all need every chance we get to do what we can to help these struggling businesses.
Yes, we do.
And all of them are struggling. We're all trying to do our part, so we'll, hopefully this will help some. Anything else? We are adjourned.
We need to vote on, we need to vote on that.
We need to make this happen.
We need to vote.
Are we voting on the margaritas or what?
No, sir.
All favor?
Aye.
Close like sign. So we'll, we'll keep, keep this services available for the restaurants and the businesses starting Saturday through September 1.
That's right.
Want to say something before we adjourn?
Sure.
I just thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers. I have no idea how I contracted this. I have no fever, I have no symptoms. I feel great and I'm grateful for all your concern. But just encourage everybody to, you know, take precautions and everything because you just never know. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for encouraging me to, me and my wife, to go out there and take the test last week. After you mentioned it in the commission meeting, my test was that Thursday afternoon. So it's been a week and I have not exhibited one single sign of, of anything, but I am quarantined and, and, you know, I think it'll be up Sunday. And, but I just appreciate everybody's concern and thank you all for helping me out.
Well, Commissioner, we, we all have been praying for you and thinking about you. And, you know, just keep in mind, you know, watch this morning, this doctor that's been on TV a whole lot, Dr. Fair, a young guy, 42 years old, he runs five, 10 miles a day. Just a great physical specimen of a person. He's a immunologist and very well learned. They keep having him on TV talking about the pandemic. And he had had four tests done in, in, you know, in intervals because he travels around so much and all four of them were negative. And, and his, and of course, Dr. Fauci said this the other day too, that some of these tests may, may prove to be 50, 50% accurate. So, so he took a flight to New Orleans and the plane he was on was quite crowded. And when he got on it, he thought, well, you know, I don't, maybe I should get off, but he didn't. So he's pretty convinced that that's how he got his. And he, he was masked, you know, was doing everything to keep his area clean, all that. But, but as an immunologist, he said he really strongly feels like he contracted it through his eyes. And, you know, you do get things through your eyes, the moisture, you know, goes right on through your body. And that's how he says he thinks he got it. So I think people sometimes should wear some kind of goggle or at least glasses or sunglasses that kind of cover you a little bit so, so nothing gets, floats into your eyes. It's just one more thing to try to look at. The other thing, Commissioner, is we, my wife and I were tested last Tuesday. You know, you went and tested Thursday. And we got our, our results Saturday, which were negative. And of course, we went back to King's Daughters after you were positive. And again, there's another great way to get tested. It's similar to what we did out, out at the college. They come out, they're, they're so orderly, but two minutes, you're tested. And, and my wife got hers back, I ain't got mine back. We both got tested the same minutes, but I still hadn't received mine. But you get tested today and, and be positive tomorrow. So it isn't a preventive, it's an informative test to let you know if you have it or not. And if you don't have it, continue everything you've been doing, you know, keep it safe. If you do test positive, don't go crazy trying to think where was it I might have contracted this. The least possible place is probably where you contracted. So all of us are vulnerable every day, 24 hours. The tests, the tests are going to help us know where and how and who. And, and if we know those things and, and then the people that get, get tested and are positive, they quarantine themselves. You know, we're, we quarantined because of, you know, me being to me last Thursday. But it's, I mean, it's, it's something we're going to look back on, I hope. We're going to look back on in not too distant future and say, how did we get through that? You know, that's, it was crazy what we went through. But, but then you hear all the discussion about what's normal going to be? What is normal going to be for us from here on out? It may not be what it was before. But anyway, I, I appreciate serving with you guys every day and city staff. We're, we're in positions where we can make a difference and we need to continue to make a difference for people in their lives, whether it's water and safety or how to deal with this pandemic. And we have to be role models and do the right thing for them. Well, we'll see you on the 20, two weeks from today. 28?
28.
Okay, stay safe, everybody, and feel free to call if you got a question about something or follow up, but everybody stay safe. God bless all of you.
Have a great day, guys.
Thanks.